Budget deliberations, it is June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the time is two P M. In attendance are Commissioners Matarri and Duncan, Commissioner Brooks is excused. Are there changes to the agenda? Hearing none, public comment. Okay, hearing none. We'll get into our one item and it is an action item. It's our F Y twenty-five budget brief, including our capital budget. And so, Brandy Falcon, our Director of Finance, take it away.
Good afternoon Commissioners Brandy Falcon for the record. So today we're gonna go through all of the capital requests for the F Y twenty-five budget. So as a reminder, right now in our preliminary summary, we have seven point seven million dollars to cut from the budget at a three percent increase. It's changed a little bit since the last time you saw it. The U of I lease that the Board approved at the last business meeting had a three hundred and sixty dollar increase, so I had to add that to the budget. The ICrim premiums were originally budgeted at a five percent increase, but H R got word from ICrim they would actually be a thirty percent increase. So I've increased our ICrim premiums by two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. The public defender, this is not reflected in the copies you have yet, because I just found out about it today. The public defender's lease includes now that we have to pay for utilities. So I've added twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars to the budget for the utilities for that lease for next year. We still have an increase to the interest revenue. So whenever you have spoken to the Treasurer and feel comfortable with his proposed interest number, I can go in and increase that. So I'll just wait for your direction on that. I'd like to do that this month sometime, though. So I think the proposal was up to six million, would be a two million dollar increase. So if you feel comfortable with that, just let me know. And then I still haven't done a calculation for what it would be to cut open positions by fifty percent that have been open longer than a hundred days. I'll try and have that done by our personnel meeting this Thursday.
Okay, so is that what we're agreeing to, is cutting all positions open a hundred days or more to fifty percent? Is that what you want to do?
I was just gonna do the calculation so you can see it. I hadn't assumed yet that that's what you wanted to do.
I think we should look at that first, but I'm not sure that that's what I want to do. We've done a lot of work on increasing pay to fill these positions. And if we start filling them and we haven't budgeted for them, that can be a problem.
Okay.
Also look at maybe a hundred and fifty days?
Sure. Yeah, I can do it for a hundred and fifty days.
Or...
There's still, so typically these positions that have been open this long, there are multiple positions that they are ongoing filling, if that makes sense. So they don't ever, some of the departments don't ever get down to those that are, have been open that long.
Yeah, I understand. And, you know, we don't have to cut them at fifty percent. I mean, we could cut them to...
Seventy-five or, yeah.
Okay. And then, again, looking here at the preliminary summary, at a three percent increase, if I just take out all of the new requests, you essentially have two point two million dollars you can spend. About a million of that right now is for health insurance. So that leaves you with one point one million dollars that you can spend on personnel, capital, and B budget requests. So just, that's kind of another way to think of it. That's kind of what you're working with.
The one point one, so that would be COLA and STEPS?
Well, that would, you have one point one million to spend on anything.
Okay.
Personnel, which would be COLA and STEPS, and then capital and B budget.
And how did you get down to that final one point one million?
So just right here, these are all the requested increases. So if I take all of them away except for health insurance, then you have a one point one nine surplus. So that just kind of rough estimates, okay, you have one point one nine million to spend at a three percent increase. If we increase revenue, that gives you more money to spend. If you use fund balance for capital requests, that gives you a little bit more property tax to spend elsewhere. Right, so I'm gonna dive into the capital summary. I marked it with a little green sticky note in your packet, so it's easy for you to find. So that's our CapEx summary that has everyone's capital requests. I'm gonna start at the top with our solid waste requests. So they have eight capital requests for a total of three point five million, starting at the top from a hundred thousand going all the way down to the thirty thousand dollar request. They already presented all of these at their budget meeting. Do you want me to go through each of these individually? They're all funded by Solid Waste's own income, but do you want to go through all of them or do you feel comfortable approving all of Solid Waste's requests?
I'm fine with them, I went through them.
Yeah, I'm fine. They're funding these things themselves, so...
Right, okay. So after Solid Waste, then we get down to the forty thousand dollar request for a fleet vehicle from the assessor. This right now is budgeted to be paid out of their restricted fund forty-six fund balance. In the request, they stated, "This will provide a replacement four-by-four truck for the timber and agriculture appraiser, allowing him a dedicated vehicle that is capable of handling the duties and terrain that the position demands."
Okay, and it just doesn't say no property tax on the right-hand side.
Right, technically you could fund it with tax if you wanted to, that's why I left it blank. Right now, though, it's being funded with restricted fund balance. So if you cut it, you're not gonna make a dent in your overall budget deficit. But, does that make sense?
Yes.
It's not contributing to your overall budget deficit, because it's being funded with their restricted fund balance.
Right.
Is this a new vehicle?
Yes, it is.
And do we know if Fleet Management has had, looked at this for any kind of a hand-me-down?
They have, and I don't believe there's a trickle-down vehicle available, but if Keith...
Yeah, he says no.
I believe Keith said no, there's not a trickle-down vehicle available.
Okay.
So are you thinking to approve or cut the request?
I'm fine from the fund balance, but if before October we find that there is a trickle-down somewhere, then that's fine. But I think that we're actually short trickle-downs, right now anyway, for trucks, four-by-four trucks.
Okay. Are you okay with approving it as well, or...
From fund forty-six?
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah. I guess they just don't have any other vehicles. What kind of vehicles are they using right now? I mean, they don't traditionally have four-wheel-drive vehicles.
You'll need to come to a microphone.
And thank you for answering just some of these basics here.
We do have some all-wheel-drive vehicles, but this is particularly for, we need something with more ground clearance. Most of our vehicles are all-wheel-drive, not four-wheel-drive, so we're looking for something that the timber and ag associate can go out in the field and have that higher ground clearance and not get stuck. We don't have any, so we just had a G M C envoy that we had to auction off, or send to auction, because it was no longer useful at all. So at this point, we don't have anything that has the ground clearance that would be most adequate for that position.
Okay, alright.
You're okay with it?
Yes.
Okay. Next is a request for a pickup truck from Parks. They're, it's the next three lines. So the eight, the three lines for eighteen thousand, for a total of fifty-five thousand, that's a pickup truck. There's, he's splitting the funding between his restricted fund thirty-seven fund balance, his restricted fund thirty-five fund balance, and restricted fund thirty-two. So that's Vessel, Parks, and Noxious Weeds. So right now, all three of those lines are being funded with restricted fund balance, and they are not contributing to the budget deficit.
And doesn't, don't they have a truck that they can trickle down in lieu of this one?
Yes, I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. He's coming on the sixteenth to propose to purchase the truck earlier, and it would be trickled down to one of three departments. So this can be, he's bringing this forward earlier, because he has the funds to do that so far. So I just wanted to let you guys know.
Remind me, though, the three departments. We have Building and Grounds, Treasurer, and what was the third department that needed the, I just read it in some email today and I can't...
I know, I'm sorry.
But I think you guys already accounted for, yeah, I think it's, it would be going to the Treasurer's office.
Yeah, it was the Treasurer.
Yeah.
So he's bringing that forward on the sixteenth, so that can be removed.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Okay.
It's an email I got today.
So we can remove that request and it'll come before you, probably the next business meeting, and he'll buy it in the F Y twenty-four budget.
Yeah, are you all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Next is a request from the airport for sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars. It's a Verkata system. I'll just read the description on their request. It says, "Verkata system puts new controllers, card readers, and a standalone five G network. We can operate on our Zipline Fiver. It provides us with all new equipment installed, plus four cameras we can install to monitor the airport operations area. The yearly license fee will ensure we receive updates to the system as they are available." So I believe it's gate, cameras, and technology, and it's funded with the airport's restricted fund balance. And that, it goes in conjunction with the next line for a hundred and sixteen thousand. So I believe it's broken out between the software portion and the actual equipment portion.
So if Kim would be prepared to answer a question, what is the ongoing cost for this software?
It looks like it says here forty-five hundred dollars a year, is that right?
Kim Stevenson for the record, yes, it is forty-five hundred for the licensing upgrades every year.
Okay, right. I'm fine with this. I mean, there's stuff that has to be done, security-wise.
No, I agree, just because of the nature of the airport and what it is, so it's fine.
Okay, so I'll mark those two lines as approved. So next is the ninety-four thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollar request from the jail. It's made up of three requests. So there's booking area mesh for sixty-one thousand, a vacuum sealer for seventeen thousand, and an iStat machine for fourteen thousand. So the booking area mesh, it says, "Our booking area has cells that are usually filled with inmates in protective custody. Therefore, those who are new arrestees booking from their agencies sit in an open seating area with no way to secure them." And then I believe they kind of already explained the vacuum sealer at their budget meeting. It would be used to vacuum seal all inmate property. And then the iStat machine is a real-time lab results for inmate patient care. And this right, right now it's being funded with property tax. So you could use fund balance and it would reduce your budget deficit or cut the request.
If I may be heard on this?
Yeah.
Under Sheriff Brett Nelson for the record. Upon further discussion with our command staff and with the directive given by yourself, Commissioner, a couple weeks ago about what we need day-to-day, the following items we consider cutting from our budget going forward, if I may list those, because this started off the discussion. Obviously, first was the driver's license lobby remodel, the jail booking area mesh, the jail property room conveyor, the animal control horse trailer, the jail inmate clothing vacuum sealer, and the jail iStat machine. Again, going along with our process of making us more effective, efficient, safe, we believe that those aren't needed for the day-to-day operations going forward. That totals approximately three hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of savings. I'd only ask that those be contingent based on the revenues coming in higher than anticipated when they do so, so we could have a possible future discussion.
Well, now, with respect to the vacuum sealer and the conveyor system, I mean, those are things that I think the need will be significantly greater when the jail has completed those pods, because you'll have a much larger capacity. I mean, you could use it now, but...
Understood, and that is correct.
But you're still able to get by.
We are.
Not easily, but get by.
Again, and I go back to the directive given by Commissioner Duncan of what we need from day-to-day operations right now, we're getting by. So believing, as we increase our jail population, it'll be a definitive need as opposed to, if you will, a need right now.
So help me understand, we talk about increasing, but are we actually gonna be bringing more prisoners in, or are we just trying to house the prisoners in bed that we have now?
Well, we're housing them with our current population.
Right, but some of them are in boats on the floor, and it's not the best situation, and because you have classification, we want to get these hard cells...
Correct.
And that thing.
Because the segregated housing for our special needs inmates are more in desire now than ever before because of the issues that we have outside in our community.
Right.
Mental health, substance abuse.
Yeah, so I guess I'm looking at it, making it better and more efficient for what we have now, not, we have a hundred more beds, so now we're gonna have a hundred more prisoners.
Well, you're correct. The driver isn't the fact that there's more jail cells. The driver is the fact of the population.
Correct.
So you may not have more population in the jail, once those two pods are completed, but it's probably a safe bet you're going to in the next couple of years.
And I think we can all agree, it's the ebb and flow. We're going into our peak season with the extra thirty to forty thousand people that'll be in the area, which in turn will increase our population for the next several months to come.
So for me, just having toured the jail last week, I would be inclined to agree with your cuts, except for the booking mesh area.
Okay.
So especially in the summer, and I mean, I would consider that for this year.
Oh, I think that that's a prudent expense. I mean, you don't want people roaming around in that particular part of the jail.
Definitely no, and again, that further enhances the safety of not only the inmates, but the staff in and about that area. So we were looking at the general area moving forward, just for cuts.
So if you approve the booking area mesh, are you thinking to fund that with fund balance or with property tax?
I would say fund balance from F Y twenty-four, though. I would say get that...
Oh, you want to approve it this year?
I would say get that done sooner than later.
It's not that much.
And do we know if we got three quotes on that, or just? One quote, okay. All right, so we might even be able to save more money if we went after a little bit more aggressive quotes, or...
Given the direction we have now from the Commissioners, we will actively seek those out.
Okay, are you comfortable with that? So it's still, we'll have to, when you get the quotes, it'll still have to come before a business meeting and...
Understood. Thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna mark the conveyor system, the vacuum sealer, the iStat machine, and the driver's license lobby remodel as cuts.
Yes.
And we'll approve the booking area mesh to come forward in F Y twenty-four.
Yes.
So next would be the seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollar request from Sheriff's Maintenance. That is a nine-one-one HVAC for thirty thousand, the powder coating oven for twenty-nine thousand, and the spray booth for seventeen thousand. Right now, they're being funded with property tax.
I mean, to me, the HVAC's a no-brainer, we can't...
Yeah, we...
Get away with, you gotta keep that.
And if I may speak on that on behalf of Tom, that was a five-year plan that's been in the making for twenty-plus years, according to him. So that is one thing that he was definitively taking a stance on that we definitely need.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah, the powder coating oven and the spray booth, I mean, that's something that, I mean, I understand the why, but I'm not so sure that this will be the year that we can look at that. I mean, my priority is get the personnel stuff squared away first, before we, you know, start adding more things that will make our jobs nicer, but not necessarily, you know, addressing all the personnel things.
And if I may just be heard on those, on behalf of Tom, when we had our discussion, he definitively said both of those are a need for his personnel, because they are finding that they're powder coating more and more things for the jail for maintenance purposes. In addition to the spray booth, for purposes of health and safety of his personnel, they spray in their current workspaces right now. So he asked that we strongly consider continuing on with those requests for both the need for the jail and also for the safety of his people. How about it, Tom?
Tom Reed for the record. Yeah, the powder coat oven is a replacement for a failing one, so I can kind of push that aside and milk this one curly. The spray booth, just as an example, Building and Grounds does have a spray booth, and theirs isn't big enough to do what they need to do as well. So my thought was to keep my guys as safe as Building and Grounds, we need some kind of booth to spray.
Is their booth not big enough for your needs?
No, theirs isn't big enough for their needs. And Greg can speak to that. I mean, most of the time, the doors are open on that spray booth when they're spraying lacquer and that kind of stuff, so it's almost a mute point to even use it.
It's seventeen thousand, and I would be comfortable with keeping the seventeen thousand in.
That's fine, and we can revisit it. That's fine. I mean, I understand the, I understand the reason for it, you know, it's just, I'm trying to keep the people right above the...
Right. And the powder coat oven is actually an upgrade as well, so I can see pushing that off maybe next year or the year after, because it is going from electric to a gas. So that's a significant cost to replace it.
So I would also suggest, though, that the HVAC and the spray booth come from fund balance.
Next year, or do you want them to come forward right now, like you did for the other items?
I'm fine with next year, unless you have a reason to push it forward.
I mean, these are small requests. I think the challenge is that in past years, there's been a lot of underestimating on our revenues, and so, you know, we would get these large lumps of money to go into fund balance for these kinds of requests. I don't know how much we're gonna have that this year.
Well, I was thinking the five-year plan specifically.
Yeah.
Because the HVAC would, could qualify under that, and the, you know, if you're comfortable with the spray booth coming out, too.
Yeah, my understanding of the five-year plan is that it's only for the jail, but if you want to use some of that for this HVAC and spray booth, we can certainly do that.
Well, I mean, to me, the HVAC would be a regular five-year upgrade plan. I mean, not every five years, but in that situation, but, Tom?
Correct, and that's original, that's ninety-two. So we've been doing a great job as far as maintaining the lifespan of the equipment. It's far outweigh, outlived, it's, it's useful as.
Okay, so I'll mark the HVAC and the spray booth to come from fund balance, and we'll cut the powder coated, powder coating oven?
Yeah.
Okay. Next, for a hundred and four thousand dollars is two detective vehicles. Right now, they're being funded with property tax.
So I guess I would be comfortable if the money that was gained from the auctioning of our forty, the forty units that we've replaced, go to fund these trucks. So I think that's happening.
I would have to go find where that went and how much it was.
Well, even if you get three thousand for forty vehicles, that's enough to cover these two trucks.
I haven't spoken to Russ on what that's gonna look like, or what we're gonna be able to draw from those at all. So that would be something for us to entertain and see what we get. I'm not opposed at all to say, whatever we get from that, we kick back in, and then the rest is covered from whatever you desire the source is from.
When are you gonna auction it?
Well, Russ is supposed to start that as soon as the auction house opens up for the spring to start it. So I imagine any time now, they've been, obviously, this week involved in a, in a whole move up to Kootenay North, so I can certainly jump on that immediately and say we gotta start, you know, pushing harder on that to get those over there and find out what we're gonna get from them.
I think that would be helpful, because we could make a better decision. I mean, we still have some time.
Yeah, I think you had mentioned July, just at the top of your head last time or something, so figured that that would be reasonable.
So if we collect that money in F Y twenty-four, that would mean that these get paid for out of F Y twenty-five fund balance, because that's where that money will end up. So I'm just gonna mark these as being funded with fund balance for now.
Okay.
And then we can, I'll have the Sheriff's Office follow through with me to let me know how much they end up getting for those forty vehicles, to make sure it's enough to cover these. So next is one million forty-two thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. This is primarily the ten patrol vehicles the Board already approved for the Sheriff's Office to order, and as well as a backcountry truck for eighty-six thousand dollars. Right now, they're both being funded with property tax.
So I think the backcountry truck could also be covered, partially covered with Title III funds, and then if there's any additional from the forty vehicles, return to.
I'll have to check with Ryan and see how, if, how much Title III is available, and if he's spent it on anything.
So I know we just approved twenty-five thousand, I think, for reimbursement, so...
I would, I would say we can investigate that. Again, a lot of that money is being, I won't say reserved, it's just the projection forward about, you know, that every year we gotta get some motorcycles to get in the backcountry, we gotta get side-by-sides to ensure that those are up to speed. So a lot of those funds are kind of like earmarked to move forward with different projects that we get in, as opposed to the truck that's gonna suck it all away, and then we're gonna struggle to get some of those other things paid for down the road. I guess half dozen one, half dozen the other, at some point, we're gonna have to try to kick in to assist with whatever we need in those, in those, in that realm.
I actually think a five-year plan for the Title III funds would be very helpful. Is that something that you can provide?
We'll have to look into, I have not looked at that part of it, so we'll need to do
So for the ten patrol vehicles, are you thinking you want to fund them with property tax or with fund balance?
I think that's a property tax item, because we're constantly buying these things, or constantly getting rotated out.
It is, but then it just eats up everything.
Yeah, I mean, it's being funded right now with tax, so we can leave it right now and just continue going through and seeing how much we can cut from the budget. And maybe if we get to the end and you decide you want to use fund balance for a portion, but I do agree it's an ongoing cost, so we should make an effort to try and levy for those.
Commissioners, those ten vehicles are possibly going to be here by September, and they would be in this year's, not next year's, so...
We've approved them for, yeah.
Yeah, come out of fund balance and then for F Y twenty-four.
So it would just be a replacement, is all we're saying. If we, if we budgeted for them, it would be replacing the money that's coming out this year.
We did get word that those are slated to start the build hopefully by the second week of July.
Thank you.
All right, so next is the seventy-one thousand one hundred and one dollar request. So I marked the horse trailer for twenty thousand as a cut, because we already discussed that earlier. The additional request is for a truck for animal control for fifty-one thousand dollars. Right now, it's being funded with property tax.
Just a normal rotation for that truck.
Let me see what they wrote.
Yeah, so Commissioners, it's lifestyle, it's up to over a hundred thousand miles of its own, and, you know, just due to the nature of animal control, they actually probably put on more miles than a patrol vehicle, just due to the geography, that they go to every animal call out there in the county, as opposed to specific regions of calls for district deputies. And so it's going to gain, you know, more than the twenty thousand a year, it's gonna be probably closer to thirty thousand in this year alone by the time we get that coming back around. But we did talk about that with the Under Sheriff, about needs again, you know, versus, you know, definitive needs right now. We were willing to put that aside as a need and go one more year with that, but it's going to come around next year and be at the top of the list, no matter what. Or we could look at funding that right now, and that could be a trickle-down for somebody. That's, you know, again, that's technically, if you look at the policy and the way that we are talking trickle-down, that's what it's supposed to be. It's supposed to go to another non-emergency section of the county that could utilize that.
Are they four-wheel-drive?
Yes.
So...
It's a Ford F-1.
For the assessors.
Yeah, no, it's just the difference is the assessor has the, the fund balance, fund balance to you. So it's not necessarily gonna help our property tax situation, but...
This also, so it's like, they originally came asking for two animal control vehicles, now you guys are down to one. That's what the proposal was that came to us, is fleet, because we were thinking with... That's what the proposal was that came to us as fleet, because we were thinking with, uh, maybe a possible trickle-down. The third person is also, we have a new facilities director starting, so do we trickle one of these down to him? So I didn't know if there was a second, um, animal control vehicle that, 'cause two were approved, 'cause both of them, both of them are at mileage. There are, I think, a hundred and two and a hundred and five thousand is when, when it was proposed. So I remember the third one was the facilities director having a vehicle for him. Currently, we don't have anything like that. So just following up.
Okay, thank you.
Although two may be, um, at their mileage, one's always a spare, and so it's not going to incur the same amount of mileage over the year. And so, um, I, I don't know if, I think maybe we had a typo, we were talking two detective cars, and maybe we threw two ACs in there. But we're fine with just the one for this year for sure, and the other one is, is a spare.
Um, I would, uh, consider keeping it on there, but looking at, you know, at where it falls into the priority list.
Agreed.
So are you wanting to fund that with tax or with fund balance?
Well, if it's a normal rotation, I think it should be a tax...
Okay.
Item.
Agreed.
I'll leave it as tax. The next line for fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars is from, uh, the sheriff's admin budget. It's a Flex Data Replication Software. Does someone wanna explain what that is?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Beverly Crawford, and I'm the Flex Replication Server, um, our CAD software, you know, is Motorola Flex. That's where all of our information goes, the database, um, for all of our citizens' information, all of our rec logs. The replication server, um, is, will allow us to send certain pieces of information from the actual Flex server itself, um, to the replication server. And then all of our third-party softwares that come and, um, get information from our Flex database will take from there, and they'll never be touching our actual Flex server. Um, and so it'll help us with cybersecurity and, um, just allow us a, a way more secure way of talking back and forth to these other softwares.
Is it an, uh, is there an ongoing expense?
Um, there'll be minor, uh, licensing fee.
But like a thousand, two thousand a year?
Yeah.
And that's just a one-time, um, upfront fifteen, and then the ongoing is much, much less.
Right.
That sounds more like a fund balance.
Yes, I would agree.
Commissioners, if I may add too, Grant Kinsey's the one that asked us to put it in our budget as a need, definitive need for the organization.
So fund balance with that.
I'll mark that one for fund balance. Uh, the next line, sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, this is the jail's five-year plan budget, uh, requesting for slider replacement. I believe they do one or two every year. This is currently being funded with the assigned five-year plan fund balance.
I'm happy with that.
And then next line is also, uh, this is facilities five-year plan. This is a AHU for the Justice Building for four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. It's also being funded by the five-year plan, assigned fund balance.
Uh, what, what exactly is an AHU?
It says AHU Rooftop Unit for Justice Building, and then Roofing Repair After Install. Says, "Original unit outdated, not performing well."
We've actually put this off for a few years.
Just the old courthouse or the, the one next?
It's Juvenile Justice. Isn't this the Juvenile Justice Center, or is this the, um...
Um, no, it doesn't say that. It says the right, I think it's the existing, like, the old, the current justice building that we use. And I don't know what AHU means. I assume that it's... Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, so it is here on campus then.
Okay.
And we've, we've known about that, um, there was one point, we were gonna try to put it in with the Justice Center expansion, but it didn't make it in there. So, yeah, and it's, it's in the five-year assigned fund balance.
Then we'll keep it.
All right, next line is a sixty thousand dollar request from Enhanced to 911 for a side-by-side. It's currently being funded with the restricted E911 fund balance.
I'm not sure for me that the use is there yet, the amount of trips in the winter. 'Cause they can borrow backcountry and it's what they do now.
Well, I think the winter is when it's impassable.
Well, I'm sorry, that, that's what I mean, though, it's, how many times, Colin, how many times do you go there in the winter?
We don't go at all now during the winter unless it's absolutely necessary, um, due to the fact that to go on a che, a winter check, we have to pull the resource from its, at, its intended purpose. That is why we don't currently go, our winter trips are very infrequent. Essentially, the only time we go now is when it's absolute worst-case scenario, um, so...
Does it cost money when you have to go?
Uh, it, well, costs, uh, deputy time, uh, that we're pulling for that, you know, fuel and resources to go up there. That is, you know, that is the cost. We sometimes, uh, incur costs with our service providers when, uh, we've taken our generator guy up during the winter and stuff like that. Um, if we don't take him, he charges us the cost to use his transport and his side-by-side, but...
And what's the, uh, lifespan of this, uh, of this purchase, would you say?
Uh, I mean, for our use case lifespan, I would, I would say ten-plus years. I mean, we're, it'll, it will be low mileage use. We will do, start doing, uh, annual winter checks, at least one to each site, um, just to make things, sure, everything is functioning properly and then emergency use case. But, um, other than that, it will not incur very many hours, uh, during, you know, that, that is the intended purpose for it.
Yeah.
Um, so it'll be a long lifespan use if, uh, approved.
Well, it would be a easier decision if you could say we're spending more than six thousand a year on our winter operations, so that you could actually show that by buying this, we're actually saving money, because we're spending more money to pay other people, um, or our salaries and so forth to go up there in the wintertime.
Commissioner, I, I, I could, uh, we could provide that, however, we would then incur the cost to my service provider to do winter checks per trip, uh, to just do a winter check, which at winter hours will be a hundred and twenty per hour for two techs, for five-hour round trip, not covered under a maintenance cost, and do that for each six of our sites will be more than six grand a, a year. That is if we chose to start doing checks, and we don't, we only do, don't do that for that reason. However, checks can save us the emergency, uh, you know, the last three trips I have taken have been to Canfield for a high temp alarm, because the HVAC has frozen over from failure. The winter check may have caught that before this emergency dire need to get up there at, at that time, when it's no longer working. We may have caught that earlier and before it got to that point to the winter check, but...
So, uh, a question would be, with this five-year Title III money, is there a trickle-down side-by-side?
Again, we'll have to look into that, um, you know, and figure out what, what the lifespan of those currently is at. Again, this, I would say, I mean, we, obviously, we don't wanna be frivolous, but again, this is restricted funds, and that balance is up, uh, well above of what we are normally sitting at and can absorb this. And we are talking a public safety, you know, issue if those towers go down, because then that's communications of the deputies responding to the calls for service. And most likely, it's gonna come during an incident that is sparking resources needing to be out there on the road or, you know, handling calls for service, and we won't have time to get a free unit to go to the Marine Bay to get the side-by-side to go with them, 'cause we're gonna be out there handling the chaos that's ensuing because what has brought the tower down.
Do you know how many tracks side-by-side you have right now?
I don't, sorry. I believe, yes, I think we have the two, if I remember, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, when I went out there with Ryan Miller. I believe he's got one that was currently set up and one that he was, had converted into, um, yeah, summer tires, but it has tracks that do go with it.
Yeah, the problem is that, you know, the, the right way to do this is to do the, the periodic checks during the winter, but we're not doing that. And so we're just relying on something breaking down, and then we'll get up there, which is not really the right way to do that. It doesn't affect property taxes. Uh, I would be inclined to go with it, uh, only because I think it's appropriate that we do things the right way, uh, as opposed to, uh, you know, pushing things off and then waiting until something breaks, 'cause it usually never breaks at the perfect time. It always, it's like being stuck on the side of the road, it's when you have to be somewhere, not when you just wanna be somewhere.
Sure, we can leave it in.
We'll leave it in.
Just looking for...
Commissioners, I would say too, I believe the, the two current that backcountry has are two-seaters, and this is a request for a four-seater because of the rule, uh, one is none, two is one. And we often transport more expensive electronics equipment, and, uh, often we take our other vendor, you know, our support HVAC tech or something up with us. So we need a four-seater, and when we do that, the only one we can take is the SAR four-seater, which of course has its intended SAR use. And, uh, I have been out before where it's been requested for a search and rescue event, 'cause we're on the hill during a wind event or something like that, that it's asked elsewhere, and we've already plucked it away for our use, so...
Can SAR or KCSO use this one if, uh, if need be?
Absolutely, if need be, if, if we're not using it, so with all E91 resources, if we're not using it at the time and it's needed elsewhere, um, absolutely.
So it could be used if there were two people missing in two different locations, because right now, we only have a depth of one for one rescue at a time. Okay.
The next, uh, line for a hundred and sixty thousand is also, uh, E911 request for consulates, battery banks, and an HVAC replacement. This is currently being funded with, again, the 911 Enhanced Restricted Fund Balance.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, and for the computer equipment for the next line down.
Okay, the hundred and fifty-seven thousand on the next line.
Yeah.
Commissioners, if I could note, for the two battery bank replacement, one of them is for Canfield and one of them for, is Hudu. We could, we can, if you would like, uh, can cut the Hudu one, because you will likely see a, uh, budget request or a purchase request next business meeting. We were hoping to limp the battery bank along, however, we have another failed battery up there, so it needs to be replaced this year, and we have the extra capital funds to do it, so you'll see a request from me to replace it this year, um...
That's fine.
Sounds good.
So that would be fifty thousand.
Okay, so cut one of the battery bank.
Cut one of the, the Hudu battery bank, could be, cut.
All right, and then, um, second to last, now we're on to the coroner's request. One million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars for lab construction phase one, and it's currently being funded with property tax.
I think this would be a prime, um, expense for that extra two million from the, if we wanted to increase that interest revenue. It's a one-time thing, and, uh, I definitely don't wanna use the interest for ongoing expenses.
Well, you know, we talked about this before, and I'm certainly open to it, but I'd like to at least see if the, uh, grant for next year does offer any construction, um, uh, money in there, and if it doesn't, then we can do that. And we're just talking about a few extra months.
Yeah, I have a, um, I have an email from Dr. Johnson that talks about that grant, and, uh, it would be an anomaly if that were to happen. Unfortunately, I don't know where I put it, so, um, Dr. Duke, did you wanna come speak to that?
Yeah, Dr. Johnson, I, you know, just based on how those grants have gone in the past, it, it was an unusual one that occurred last year, and that's not their typical pattern is to allow for infrastructure, so the odds of that occurring would be exceedingly small.
But we're only talking about a few months here, right? I mean, just a few months? Is that, is that gonna change everything?
Uh, no, 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 I, I, I'm just, eh, you know, eh, everything, uh, you know, everything always comes with, you know, lane construction and during the time period of reassessing and, you know, costs always go up. So would our savings offset, um, or would our benefit offset, um, eh, you know, the potential increase in costs, et cetera? Uh, because what's interesting about, you know, our office is that we're, you know, we're, we're obviously working in conjunction with, um, you know, the sheriff's office and the prosecutor's office, as they're obtaining evidence, the prosecutor is obviously going to, um, uh, prosecute criminal cases. But what they all, we're all three working together, 'cause, um, obviously, they're using our, um, autopsy results, et cetera, for, for their cases. It's integral to all three of the, the operation of all three. In this past year, we've had two cases already where we had to overcome, um, uh, to a significant extent, to Cootney County, um, previous medical examiners that had been done in Spokane, which cost, you know, significant amounts of money. So that's the balance between the two, the longer we wait, the longer we could potentially incur more court case costs, et cetera. So I'm, I'm not opposed to that, I'm just saying there's always a, a positive and a negative.
Well, of course there is, but you know, we, I, I try to make decisions on what is and not what might be. And, you know, really, all we're looking at is a few extra months, and no one has denied, uh, has not suggested it's not important. The issue, though, and I've spoken with the prosecutor and obviously the sheriff on these things, you know, so it's a balancing act. And like I mentioned, you know, to me, the number one priority is getting all of our staffing issues squared away first.
Sure.
And then what's left over afterwards, we can triage that among all the different, uh, elected officials.
Okay.
So, but I've said from day one to you, and I wanna be consistent, I, I see the need for it, you know. It's just a matter of, you know, I'd hate to start this process and then discover for some reason, three months after, you know, four months into our new fiscal year, oh, they came back out with this construction money, 'cause that's the way it was presented earlier this year.
Yeah, no, and that's true, and, and one additional caveat to that would be that, let's say, for example, in best-case scenario, just so you know, that they very commonly advertise those grants in March, and so then, and they're very commonly due in June, and then they're awarded in June and July. So I mean, in other words, you know, it's not just really kind of three months. If, if, if we decided to go further and there's no guarantee of getting it, uh, there's also a substantial chance that it'd be a delay for a year as well. So just, so you have that in the back of your mind.
Yeah, and then the other side to this is just with the economy, you know, because, uh, a lot of our state revenues are driven, uh, by the economy. And, uh, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen, um, you know, if you pay attention to the perma bears out there. You know, we're on the cusp of gloom and doom, right? So, you know, uh, I don't think anything like that will happen, but if the revenues drop, you know, three or four percent next year, you know, that's gonna be a real pinch, uh, as far as, you know, all of these budgets.
Okay.
So...
Sounds good.
So what are you guys thinking to cut this line item, or...
Uh, I think we should keep it on for right now, you know, and, and I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with us just keeping it on in general, uh, you know, but I'd just like to at least see if this grant...
Okay.
Has an option, and, and we should, by the way, update the revenue with what the treasurer suggested for interest, because I think we should try to be precise.
Okay.
And not kinda sandbag it a little bit.
Since the coroner's thing is a, a grant, if we were to leave this in the budget, and then if we... and then if we get awarded the grant, we couldn't use it because it would be considered supplanting because you can't budget or levy for something and then turn around and replace your levy amount with grant funds. So if you want to go after the grant, we should, we'll have to cut it from the budget now. And then in the spring or wherever, if we find out we don't get the grant, then the coroner can come to you mid-year and you can just give him fund balance at that time to begin this construction. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
I just think there's a bigger need and waiting a whole nother year. I mean, we could luck out or we could get hit with having to put autopsy somewhere else, so.
Well, you know, this is no different than the, the side-by-side. You know, we're gonna spend this money and I understand the need. The question is, are we gonna be saving some money too? You know, there's a cost benefit with all of the equations. And so I understand, we can still, we could not put the revenue in from the interest and just make this a fund balance project or just make it a mid-year request. I mean, eventually, I mean, this technically should be a fund balance project. There should not be a levied project.
Correct, absolutely. So the interest, if we up the interest from four million to six million, this would be a good project for it because we're, it's not an ongoing. I don't consider four million of the two million interest, I'm sorry. I don't consider four million of the six million as ongoing. Because if interest rates go back down, then we're, we're back to not having this yearly occurring.
So how could we do this where if we don't recognize the additional interest? Just take it off the budget altogether? Is that what you're suggesting in order to make it grant?
No, I think that we have to budget the interest revenue. If we think that's what we're gonna make, we should budget it. If you want, so it sounds like you're not wanting to cut the coroner's project from the budget even though you still want to wait for the grant, is that what you're saying?
I don't personally want to wait for the grant. I think that the, we can still use the grant for other ongoing expenses, we don't have to use it for construction. So we, we still can go after grant money. So that's, that's a separate issue. I think that getting, going on this sooner than later is, would just be more beneficial to the community.
Well, even if we were to leave the coroner's project in the budget, you both agree it would be funded with fund balance, correct? That's what it sounds like. If you were gonna approve it, it would be. So then I would say that if you, if, if we cut it, if the funding source remains the same if he comes back in the spring, because it's gonna be fund balance again. So you just have to cut it from the budget to, if you're gonna, it's just you guys have to decide if you're gonna fund it now or wait until the spring. That's the decision that has to be made.
Well, look, I'm fine keeping it here. There's a reason that there's three commissioners on the board and not just two. And so we can all discuss that.
Yeah, maybe if there's a meeting where Commissioner Brooks is able to attend, we can bring this line item back up. And maybe there will be a two-out-of-three agreement one way or the other.
We'll figure out a way to make it work.
Okay, so I'm just gonna mark it for now as a maybe. I don't know.
Just keep it on there.
Okay, we'll just keep it on there for now.
But I think we do both agree that we'll up the interest from four million to six million. But again, I'm just stating that out of that six million, I only consider funding ongoing things with two million of that. The other four million should go to one-time projects or even cars because yes, all that's an ongoing issue. We just have to deal with what, what we have each year, if that makes sense.
If I may, actually, I think Commissioner Duncan made an excellent point because as you remember, there's like phase two and phase three. Phase three is CT scanner, which we don't immediately need because we, we've got an agreement with Northwest specially. But what, even if a, if a grant did come through in the spring, it wouldn't be wasted money for this particular project. It would be certainly money that we could already be putting into phase two that would make the phase two portion of the project, that, that amount less expensive. So it, it would just be, in essence, moving forward and saving that future phase two money. It would not be wasted, we would certainly still apply. And the chances of that being, because there are a lot of equipment that we were gonna have involved in refrigeration, et cetera, so that that isn't necessarily, doesn't fit into that infrastructure phase. So the odds of us being able to use that during phase two would be exceedingly high because then we'd already have our infrastructure in place. And so the odds of us using that would be good. So I, I, I mean, that, that's, that was a potential. Even if it did come through, it wouldn't be wasted money and reduce phase two.
Well, one of the things I would like to see with our new facilities director is capital planning so that projects like this are not something that we have to look at these big chunks of cash, you know, when we have it as opposed to when we don't. But actually to start planning for these kinds of expansions. And, and not have these kind of discussions because, you know, obviously what you have and what you're focused on is important to you. What other electeds and departments have is important to them.
Sure.
And, you know, as I've mentioned before, we wouldn't be building these three additional courtrooms and office space if it wasn't for this ARPA money.
Right.
The judges would be still sitting, three in an office.
Actually, that's not true. We would have gone out for a bond and it failed and we would have gone out for judicial confirmation, so.
Well.
It would have gotten done.
Well.
It was needed.
Eventually, but the point being is that that ARPA money made it a lot easier. It facilitated that. And, and so with better planning, you know, we won't have to have these conversations as much because we're ahead of the curve.
Yeah, exactly. And, and one thing just to let you know, I, I mean, in essence, our, our office is doing something similar. I, I met with Prosecutor Mortensen and all of the detectives of all of the law enforcement agencies in the county. And basically spoke with all of the detectives and basically said, what is it we can do to cut back our autopsies as much as possible because of the limitation? And we ruminated over the whole concept. And as I've mentioned before, we, the average coroner in the, in the nation sends thirty percent of their cases. We are, we are, you know, we normally spend twelve only because, which saves Cootney a lot of money because of our expertise. And we've been asked to go down to nine percent of cases. Well, what we concluded from that meeting was that we would hold bodies for a day or two to give detectives time to be able to do preliminary investigation to see if we absolutely need an autopsy or not, yes or no. Which of course now as we're in businesses and families that we can't, we have to hold on to them. Obviously they want them right away, but we have to hold on to them. So we're, we're absolutely doing every measure we can to follow within those guidelines and meet the needs of the county and law enforcement. So thank you very much for the consideration.
All right, the last item is a request from community development for two vehicles for seventy-four thousand dollars total. And currently it's being funded with property tax.
I would be, we're short on time now. I would be inclined to leave those in for now, but send Fleet Management back to the drawing board now that we kind of know what, what vehicles we are funding and what additional trickle downs might be available. And just get that information before we decide on these last two vehicles.
That's fine.
Do you want me to leave it as funded with tax?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, that's all I had for capital.
I did have some additional information on the vehicles. We were planning, after discussion with some staff, we were planning on deducting fourteen thousand dollars and making it just sixty thousand dollars for the two vehicles. We do have one vehicle that is going to surplus. And then we also have decreased our, our main vehicle maintenance due to the newer vehicles. They don't need to be in the shop as often as the older vehicles that we had before. So we're at least saving fourteen thousand dollars in this aspect of our two vehicles.
Okay, so you can put that down to sixty thousand.
Okay.
I will call for a public comment. Hearing none, two fifty-nine, meeting adjourned.